All right. We'll call the meeting's order at 7:02, 2.0 adjustments to the agenda. We are going to move 6.3, Discussion Matters, so that it comes right after our presentation. With the feeling being that probably most of you here are really your main, the main reason you may be here is because of the Administrative Structure Talk. So we'll kind of put that to the front of the line and then go back to the rest of the agenda. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? All right. 3.0, Audience and Communication. Anyone have anything they would like to ask or talk about that's not related to something on the agenda? Okay. 4.0, Presentations, 4.1, Prevention. And I hand it off to Audrey and Christine.
Is this better?
Yeah, that's better.
Are you gonna say it?
I'll have that skylight actually. Just so you can make sure you can see. So tonight, Ashley, first I'd like to introduce Christine Lou Barry. She's the Connecting Youth Director. And she and I will be presenting the Alcohol, Tobacco, and Other Drug Prevention Framework. We're going to refer to Alcohol, Tobacco, and Other Drugs, ATOD. That's the acronym we've been using. And our SAP counselor Lynn Comer couldn't be here tonight because she's also the SAP at Heinsburg, and they asked her first to present there. So I decided to have Christine present with me.
All right. So we're gonna jump right in. Good evening. Wanted to start, many of you have already heard about the Prevention Task Force and the Prevention Framework that has recently come into existence across the district. CSSU and all of its schools, no surprise, have a strong history of recognizing and supporting the importance of preventing health risk behaviors among its students. And this framework is one of the ways that we've done that. Over the last three years, Prevention Task Force has met. You can see the members over the last three years who've participated in this process. And we have met to identify a formal framework moving forward for prevention services and how they're administered with the intention of moving toward a consistently administered program district-wide. The goal really is to ensure that all of our students within CSSU are receiving a standard base of support from which to grow. And so that when they all reach here, they're coming with similar supports behind them. You can go ahead and change the... So the Prevention Task Force started in 2012 by reviewing current research identifying priority areas for prevention services in the district, identifying ways to assess existing systems within the district, and then finally created the framework. The framework is built with best practice components that you can see here. These result from all of the research that the group did. And then if you could go ahead and change this slide. As well as the goals and expected outcomes of those best practices seen here. Together, they're intended to provide schools with a way to align services with best practices and identified priorities, so that there really is some consistency across the district. At Charlotte Central School, the framework has been used to consider, particularly this year, to consider how to restructure services to best meet the needs of students.
So now putting the pieces together, the framework. There are a variety of services and supports that are available to students both within CCS and throughout partnerships with Connecting Youth and other organizations. What we're going to talk about tonight are some key components for Charlotte's prevention model. And as you can see, the SAP's role, and I'm going to just point to, really integrates between these three sections: health education, student assistance program, which we refer to as SAP, and parent education and community outreach. And basically, our SAP counselor is involved in those three roles. So one of the first Prevention Framework excerpts is the ATOD Prevention Curricula. And the goals of this particular framework is to enhance cognitive and behavioral competency to reduce and prevent a variety of health risk behaviors by our middle-level students. We try to teach students the necessary skills to avoid peer pressure, to use ATOD, and then to increase their knowledge of the consequences of substance abuse.
You can please open the hour.
And I'd just like to share some of the topics that are included in the ATOD education. We have, depending on the grade level, we have stress management and relaxation skills, self-image, body image, self-improvement, goal setting, communication skills, social skills, all the way down to assertive skills, peer pressure influence, and refusal skills. This year and in previous years, our SAP counselor teaches fifth to eighth graders as part of our Youth Skills Model, which is on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And our Youth Skills Models has two sections per grade, fifth to eighth grade, and the SAP counselor goes in and teaches the ATOD education. She uses a nationally-recognized ATOD prevention curriculum. And the prevention curriculum is based on our Vermont State Health Standards. Each grade level has developmentally appropriate material, and there's approximately 10 classes per grade that are taught by the SAP. Because the SAP is not a licensed teacher, it's not a licensed teaching position, another licensed teacher has to be on record in the room while she's teaching these classes throughout the year. And I brought this up at the budget presentations, that you really have to have two adults in the room for her to do this, teaching. And then just wanted to share some, did you go too far, I think, because? One more back. Just wanted to share some points of pride of the ATOD education program. The way the model's working, the SAP counselor is able to reach the entire fifth to eighth grade student population. There's consistency of messaging and information about ATOD prevention, and students build on their knowledge each year. The challenge that we're seeing, and that we've seen for the past few years, is that because the SAP has to plan and teach the ATOD health standards, it takes away from her primary responsibilities of the SAP program. And now, one of the other frameworks that we're going to share with you. It has to do with substance abuse prevention, which focuses, Ashley, let me just make sure. Yeah, substance abuse prevention. And this focuses on the goals of adult-student relationships, which is really our mentoring program. And we want to ensure that all students experience intentional, positive, non-parental adult relationships. And then we have a student-to-student relationship component. And the goal of this piece is to utilize social influences of the peer-to-peer relationships to encourage desirable attitudes, knowledge, behaviors, and outcomes. And the next slide will focus particularly on the CY mentoring program, which supports fifth through eighth graders in achieving their potential through close relationships with caring adults in the community. The CY mentoring program at CCS serves 21 students of the 135 who participate in the program district-wide. This is up from only seven students at the start of 2013. And there's currently a waiting list for students to be, to participate in the program. A few weeks ago, our CY mentoring coordinator Wendy Brat went to a national mentoring conference, and the most recent research shows that youth who had a mentor are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college than those who did not have a mentor. 81% are more likely to report participating regularly in sports or extracurricular activities. More than twice are likely to say they held a leadership position in a club or sports team. And 78% are more likely to volunteer regularly in their communities. So this is all positive information based on the recent research about our mentoring program. And now I'd like to share some of points of pride about the program. It's growing. Again, three years ago, we had seven matches, mentee pairs. We now have 21 and a rating list. It's a great way for our school to reach out and be connected with our community. We have several community members now mentoring in the program. Students who enter the program as a fifth grader tend to stay in it for the four years. So our retention rate is 98%, 98%. And a new trend that we're seeing the past few years is that students are self-selecting to participate in the program. It's become a popular and respected program. And in my five years since I've been here, last year was the first year we actually had students saying, "Hey, I'd like to be part of this program." So we're really proud of that. A challenge is that we do have a student waitlist. And part of that has to do with the need for our coordinator to be able to reach out, to get and tap into more community members to be mentors for the program. There's always a need for more male mentors. So if there's anyone interested in wanting to be a mentor, there's a male in the audience. We'd love to have you. And the limited staff allocation. Right now, our CY mentoring coordinator spends about 10 hours per week doing this position. It's about 450 hours per year. So a lot of time is spent trying to recruit community members with all the other activities around this. Now I'd like to move to the student-to-student relationships. You may have heard, you write some articles in the newsletter regarding Connecting Youth LEAD, which stands for Leadership, Education, the Anti-Drug. And this co-curricular activity consists of seventh and eighth grade students who work to raise awareness about making healthy choices and substance use prevention. Students plan activities promoting health and wellness with your peers, school, and community members while gaining valuable leadership experience. And just, and we have tons of information or successes I'd like to share with you. One of the first things that I'd like to share is that we do the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which we refer to as YRBS, every two years. And the LEAD group works with our SAP counselor to actually analyze the data. And then they present this during a parent dialogue night every two years. In addition, this has been a tradition, we also, the LEAD group also plans and participates in the National Red Ribbon Week. And as part of Red Ribbon Week this year, our students took part in the national campaign encouraging students, the theme was "Love Yourself." While fifth to eighth grade students in their classrooms participated in a door decorating contest that related to the theme "Love Yourself." This year, Lynn Comer, our SAP counselor, worked with the Young Writers Project staff and created a writing prompt that was used throughout all the schools. And the prompt was to ask students to write about how they manage peer influence and to tell a story about what they do to resist peers' efforts to get them to do something they don't want to do. In addition to those activities as part of Red Ribbon Week, the CY LEAD students prepared and hosted an assembly for the fifth to eighth graders at CCS with information about current trends in tobacco prevention and new tobacco laws in Vermont. There are several other activities I would just want to mention. They're very active planning and organizing a tobacco use prevention rally. They're planning for stress management events with younger students within the school. And they're preparing for a National Kick Butts Day celebration in March and preparing for a trip to CVU to meet with the LEAD groups there. Our participation is also growing. Over the last few years, we've had eight to up to 18 students participate. And I'm pleased to announce that we have two boys who joined LEAD this year. The actual activity takes place during lunch and recess, and many boys like to go outside for recess. And this year, Lynn was able to recruit two boys to be part of the committee. Another piece I'd just like to mention is that there's a lot of transition activities that take place, and I credit this to our, to our SAP, who started three years ago. Lynn actually thought of ways that we can help transition students in eighth grade to CVU. And so three years ago, she started a program where the eighth grade LEAD students actually have to take a field trip to CVU. They actually attend a LEAD meeting with the CVU students. They get a tour of the school, have lunch, and then come back. And so it's a nice way to have those students have exposure to CVU and personnel as well as other faces that they may see before they even set foot in school next year. And then another piece that was added is that we have the CVU SAP counselor come and visit all eighth graders in May. And his name is Tim, I don't know Tim's last name. And he comes in and just kind of shares what his program is about. And just, it's another face. I've sat in on the meetings, he'll tell them exactly where his office is. And it's just nice to have another face that the students have, eighth graders have, to look forward to seeing even before they set foot in the school. So we're very proud of those two components. In addition to all those activities, the students also participate in the Chittenden County Above the Influence Conference each year. Again, the trend you're going to see is, our challenge, is that because our SAP counselor is teaching and planning the ATOD at its health education standards, it takes her away from doing all these other activities.
So what you see here is another piece of the prevention framework. This is the Substance Abuse Intervention. And it focuses primarily on one-on-one work with students, but also on a very broad brush prevention efforts across the school. The goals are to reduce the risk of harm, reduce substance use rates, and to decrease problem behaviors that result from continued use of substances. So for Charlotte Central School, that is the Student Assistance Program. And it's designed to provide prevention education across the school to all students while also referring for services to students who are either struggling with their own or someone else's substance use or any of the related issues that come up as a result of that. Student Assistance Program counselor staff are all trained and state-certified counselors to do this work. There are very specific requirements that they, education requirements, and service requirements that they have to have under their belt to be able to obtain their certification. What you see here is a list of the common issues faced by students in the Charlotte program, in Charlotte School, that have seen the SAP. And it ranges, as you can see, from social challenges to transitions in the family, depression, anxiety, self-harm, substance use of a loved one. Certainly at the middle school level, we're seeing more family-related use issues than we do, than we do student use issues. But all of these place a student at risk for current or future use. In addition, the SAP counselor also assists student, family, and administrators when there are policy violations. So helping to refer out to services, helping to create plans of action for the student, how best to support them in the school and community setting. And also, like we've talked about, providing school-wide prevention education. So the next piece of the prevention framework is the parent and community outreach piece. And this is really intended to provide parents with the skills they need to engage in an asset building with their students, really to build students up, to figure out how to set appropriate rules and boundaries and keep those with their students, and how to have the hard conversations. That's really what a lot of the parent education that happens is about. How do you start that conversation and how do you keep it going? And what that looks like for Charlotte Central School is that the SAP works to facilitate parent and student dialogue through, like Audrey mentioned, the annual dialogue night. So some years, that's Youth Risk Behavior Survey. And other years, like last year, it was somebody talking about adolescent brain development. But it's an opportunity to bring parents and students into the school together to talk about important issues and to really get that dialogue started so that it can continue when they go home. In addition to the work that the SAP does at the district level, CY provides grant-supported parent education programs, both currently the Staying Connected With Your Teen and Guiding Good Choices parent workshops. Those are both nationally-recognized parent education curricula, as well as a variety of dialogue nights and speakers coming into the district to provide further information to parents.
Okay. And as Christine mentioned earlier in the presentation, one of the goals at CCS this year was really to restructure the prevention model for next year. And as I mentioned in the earlier visual, there were, the SAP was involved in health education, student assistance program, and parent education and community outreach. We're hoping if the budget passes on March 3rd, that the SAP counselor will be focusing more of her attention on this. You can change the slide now. And classes will then be taught by the health educator, allowing the SAP counselor to provide consultation to staff and parents regarding students' ATOD therapeutic needs and school-wide prevention efforts, including many of the things that were mentioned before, but collaborating with the health educator as an expert in ATOD issues, having one-to-one or individual small groups with students, meeting with them, preparing school-wide prevention campaigns, continue to administering the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, advising the CY LEAD group. And Ashley, Lynn and I talked about this this year. Next year, she's hoping if the structure does change, she'd like to offer a five through six, a fifth through sixth grade LEAD group for those students who would like to participate. In addition, she will conduct some community outreach and education programs. She will write newsletters and newspaper articles to showcase our prevention model. And she also will continue to participate in weekly care meetings and our child protection team meetings. And again, one of the big focuses is to expand on that transition model we've been using to prepare our eighth graders to come to CVU. That's our presentation. And we're open to any questions that you may have.
Audrey, what does CARE stand for?
CARE stands for, it's an acronym that came before we're here, but it has caring adults responding to...
Responding Effectively.
Yeah, responding effectively. And we meet weekly. And our school counselors are part of that. Mike DeNicolle, our planning facilitator, our SAP counselor, and our school nurse.
Thank you.
So I've been through the Youth Behavior Risk Survey yet. This is my, I'm seeing it for the first time. And I'm wondering how that gets reported back. Is that, does the result of that get reported back to parents or the board or?
Yep. So YRBS results are public. They all get posted on the Department of Health's website. CY provides, we go through the district-level data, and we do an executive summary looking at sort of the trends. You know, we've been tracking those trends for 20 years now across the district. So we do that at the district-wide level. We are also one of the few school districts in the state who asks the Department of Health to provide us with school-specific data. They don't do that intentionally, simply because, one, it's a ton of work, but also you start to lose the efficacy of the data because the, your sample size gets so small. But we do have school-specific data for all the schools. That goes directly to principals. And so when we're talking about, Audrey was talking about how Lynn works with the LEAD group to analyze the data, they're looking at the school-specific data in that case.
And then we do a presentational dialogue night to share out that information with parents with their help and support.
Great. Thank you.
And I would just point out that our numbers are large enough that it is valid data. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right. So we are jumping ahead, a little out of order, to 6.3, Administrative Structure.
You might want to do an adjustment to the agenda. Or did you already do that?
We did.
Okay. Yep, perfect.
We didn't change what it was called. I don't, however Cindy wants to do it in the minute.
You want to excuse Greg and Audrey?
Oh, yeah, I guess we'll excuse Audrey. We'll try to remember to call you.
I'll go find you.
So as, I'm trying to think. Everyone except for Lee in the audience was also attended on Thursday, is that right? Or maybe not Brett. Okay. Brett and Lee, welcome. So we had a special meeting to discuss administrative structure. We had a good conversation with the community and as the board, and as the board, we tasked Elaine with coming back to us tonight. So I guess we'll let Elaine start and then, again, have the board ask any questions or make any comments, and then we'll open it up to the community if people have things that they didn't say last time or if people weren't there that want to add their voice.
So I just want to chain link back to the very end of the meeting when you, Kristin, asked me if it would be helpful to hear what each of the board members was thinking. And each of you individually said, "Well, I could support this," or... So worked with Cindy, who was also at that meeting, to come up with an alternate proposal that I believe responds to what I heard from all of you. And that alternate proposal would be for two instructional leaders. One who would be a district principal, the other one who would be an instructional leader. The district principal would have the full 262-day contract and be responsible for budget, buildings, boards, and buses. As well as instructional focus for one segment of the organization. But the overall, you know, to your point, Eric, one person who's accountable. And the instructional leader would then have a 210-day contract and would be singularly focused on instructional leadership for whatever portion of the, either K, pre-K, 2, 3, 4, or 3 through 8, depending on who we receive for candidates and where the strongest candidate was. So that would address your, what you said to me, Clyde, that you wanted to see some fiscal adjustment.
So the person would not be triple E to 8. It would be...
They would still be segmented, although I will say Kristin and I spent from 3 to 4 o'clock this afternoon with the faculty and faculty to hear their input. And one person said, "Would you ever consider, instead of delineating the responsibilities by grade level, delineating the responsibilities by core content?" It's worth considering. And I think that that would be like when you find out who your applicants are, you see where the strengths are.
So it's math, science, and then...
Right.
Which are social studies.
Right. And still, though, with a lead district principal and an instructional leader, who would still be a principal, but would have fewer days and be focused on whatever that other part was.
And then another thing that was brought up by teachers that it seemed like there was broad support was putting out there that it might be helpful if one, if that lead person has those additional responsibilities to think about paring back. So having the one focus be K3 instead of K4 or 4, 8. Just because some of those teachers feel right now they want greater access to the administrators we have, and some concern that if that person also has more of that other stuff that they might, you know, if they had less grades they were focused on, they might still be able to get at least the access they have now.
It was a positive meeting, all around. I thought it was a really positive meeting with the teachers.
I'm very curious if there was one person who mentioned a sort of a course, a specific...
Right.
Content, right. Was there a positive response to that from some of the other people? Or was that just a long sort of outline?
I don't, they didn't take a straw vote on that. They thought it was interesting. They definitely liked the idea of looking at the candidate pool and seeing what that, what that shows and what the strengths are there, and hiring the strongest person that we can for that lead position, and then having that person involved in the next round, which means, you know, there's a color-coded calendar that shows how this can all work. But it would be the same hiring committee, would be the recommendation to do that.
So then as far as district principal salaries go, since...
So we have in Chittenden South already a frame for that that was developed by Frank Sadowsky, is that who? Gallagher and Flynn several years ago. And so it's pretty easy to see. So...
What is that entry, you know, what's a district level?
You put, you had that in, the numbers that you gave them last...
It's around 115, assuming middle, rounds, but it might, we'd have to, we might adjust that depending.
I mean, there's some leeway. I mean, we definitely have some leeway. I didn't bring that with me, but...
And then the instructional leader piece, because it would be less contract days, would be about $7,500 to $10,000 difference depending on benefits and experience. It's about four weeks less work.
So when we looked at Greg moving from a principal position to a district principal, it's kind of considered a move up, not a lateral move? Right?
Right.
So would the person, the people applying for this be people who are on their way to like wanting to become a superintendent? Or is it, are we going to potentially be in a situation where...
I don't think so. We're not.
It's a different title, therefore a different ambition for that person, potentially.
We played with lead principal versus district principal. We could go either way. We don't, the CVU and Williston District Principal has the connotation you're supervising some administrators underneath you and also the size of the system. One of the reasons we've assigned grade levels, or suggest assigning grade levels to the lead/district principal is because we believe they'll also be able to supervise a curriculum.
We weren't looking at this as if it were a different level position.
It just has a different title, which a lot of people get hung up on.
I will tell you what. Today, people mostly refer to administrators who are doing the work of principals as instructional leaders. So if you read the literature, that's what you would see. And that's to like really focus on what is the work that we're wanting them to do. And it was one of the things that I thought was encouraging in today's meetings. Teachers were saying, yes, we need that support. We hope that one person isn't doing so much of the other stuff that we're not getting the support that we need in the classroom because there's a lot of things going on.
And then as far as the budget, buildings, boards, buses?
Yeah.
Since we don't own our buses, why are buses always thrown in there for us?
Yeah, and maybe it's, it's still, there are still issues on the... Yeah, and maybe, it's, it's still, there are still issues on the bus, I think I mentioned it last time. I mean, in a way you can't divorce any of those things from the life of a school because on the bus, kids do stupid things, and that gets back into the school as it has to, and it's the school that has to deal with that. So when a kid does something on the bus that is either bullying or, you know, some other behavior, that needs to be dealt with at the school, and likely it doesn't end at the bus door. You know, whatever bullying behavior happened continues in the school, so. It's at that level that I would throw it in there, but.
I just want to say, going back to Eric's question before, the teachers are intending to create some kind of Google Doc that they can all sort of put out their ideas about what they think would be great, you know? And perhaps that ver, that idea advanced about that vertical, you know, slightly different structure could be fleshed out and, you know, in a way that seemed appealing.
But ultimately it comes down to the skill set of the person.
You know what, conceptually what was underneath that was the notion that they want to feel like they are a pre-K eight school. And so what are the things that you might do that continue to reinforce that, as opposed to split it up?
I think particularly with sort of the new standards, it's a chance to look at that, you know, by discipline as a continuum, right? So it's not, it's, you know, your fourth graders are going to be going to fifth grade and it's got to be a seamless sort of.
Well, and it's easy with the big stuff, right, with science and math, but when you come down to this, the stuff we just talked about, I mean, that's clearly five through eight, there's stuff that's clearly three, four, or four, two.
Right, and there's still supervision and evaluation that we'll need to figure out.
Right, so, I mean, it's an interesting idea, a little more difficult in the details.
Anyone else on the board? All right, anyone in the audience want to ask a question or make a comment? Can you just say your name again, I'm sorry, we should know.
I'm Debbie Deal, I'm a parent. Did a lot of teachers participate today, did you feel like you got a good sampling of?
It was scheduled as a faculty meeting, and so they were all there.
Oh, wonderful, thank you.
And it was a nice big circle, and it was really very, very helpful, there were a lot of things that came up that were helpful.
Oh, good, good, I'm glad that they participated.
So can we get a comparison that I can say, sure, lots of people are thinking about this, of costs now versus costs under this sort of proposal?
Without knowing benefit elections at all times.
Yes, right, sure, no, I know, I know, I can't.
I'm anticipating twenty thousand dollar savings, but it might be better than that, I just don't know. I'd rather over, under-promise and over-deliver.
Right.
And what about the co-principal model with, let's just say, triple E to grade four at two hundred and sixty-two days and then fifth through eighth at two-ten?
It's the same thing.
Essentially.
The, the numbers she just gave you would be, whether it's.
District principal or with an instructional leader.
It's, it's, it's two, one of them is the lead, whether it's district or lead principal, and one as instructional leader focused singularly on.
But even though, so to do the co-principalship the same way, it's a twenty thousand dollar difference, just to open the doors?
If you reduce the, if you reduce one of their contracts, yes. There'll be, I anticipate there'll be, even if you change nothing, I anticipate there'd be savings just based on who you currently have in the position and what you're likely to pay their successor.
All right.
And Elaine, you're comfortable that two hundred and ten days in that second position is sufficient?
You know what, we're going to find out, and we're going to do everything we can to make it work. I've said that to the board before, like whatever you decide, we have everything on the side of wanting to make it work. And so that's what we're going to do.
And is that, does that introduce like challenges in terms of the hiring, you know, types of people who are?
I, you know, I, I don't think so. I can tell you that in Williston, which is the model that's the closest to this, those two individuals who are the instructional leaders love that they're doing that part. And I, we've always advertised for people who do the whole thing. So I, I, I'm not saying that that should be a challenge.
Yeah, it's more like the day camp, it's not going to turn people on.
I don't, I don't think so, no.
Mike, can I just worry about the district principal, if the piece where that person is involved in the instructional leadership, let's just say it was the lower grades, I just worry about their time, you know, as far as the other principal, as an instructional leader, you know, solely an instructional leader would be, you know, hundred percent focused on.
That's why, that's why the division, if it goes by grade level, needs to be something like pre-K two and three through eight. Or pre-K six and seven, eight, and then figure out the, the balance. Because we don't have just classroom teachers, right? We have classroom teachers, we have expressive arts teachers, we have seventy staff members. So like figuring out, to your point, the pieces that aren't so just classroom-based. But that's good work to do too, and the teachers talked about that, and wanting to be a part of that to. That answer your question?
Honestly, I'm a little nervous knowing what and how much Greg and Audrey do to cut essentially four weeks out, but like Elaine said, we'll, we'll make it work. It works in Heinsburg, so hopefully.
Joe, can you just say your name for the team?
Joey, so, so different in hours, so what does that mean for the one with the less hours? Does it mean that person will not be at school for numerous days, or?
No, that would mean that they would take more time off in the summer and vacations, mostly. We would have some flexibility, I mean, that's what makes it a little more appealing. But we expect that they'd be there all school days, as I said, with some flexibility.
All right, anything else, this will be an action item shortly.
Anything else for discussion? So when you said the faculty is putting together a list of their?
They're just doing a Google Doc, and they will, as they have thoughts about what they're, what they would like to see in the next principal, so their hopes and dreams, I will also schedule a meeting with them. But the timeframe for me to do this, given that we have a vacation next week, is short. So it will be the week after vacation, I'll schedule a time after school to meet with them. They'll have an opportunity to come and say, here's what we hope and dream.
So there was no strong agreement of, we'd like to see the same model?
Um, you know, in the end, I think they were very, very supportive, and I shared this with them. I shared, I said, this is what I'm going to be presenting to the board tonight. And Kathy Lara, who was the teacher who was facilitating the meeting, asked them if they wanted to, and they said, no, we think we're good all around, so.
So they're good, meaning?
With what had been presented.
So it's basically we're, we potentially save twenty thousand dollars if we change the model?
If we reduce the number of hours.
Teaching, yeah.
Or next, yeah.
And I, I felt like there was always a little bit of sort of community feeling that if we didn't change the structure, the budget wouldn't pass, there were some people who were talking that way. So as far as, you know, how this decision comes, how we make this decision tonight, you know, it's, in my gut, it's not reduced.
This does not change your budget, right? Your budget is your budget, people are going to vote on the budget. What it does do if you save money is it gives you money at the end of the year that goes into, carry forward. That you, that you apply in the next year's budget.
The budget that's passed.
The board could, the board could direct the incoming administrators that whatever the savings is, is not to be spent.
Or not to budget it in the, in the next year.
And not to be budgeted in the future.
But it doesn't change the budget that you had to warrant by January, whatever.
But you know, there are people in the community that we hear on Front Porch Forum frequently who just hate the co-principal label and the idea of it, so to the extent that that's a sticking point for some, you know, having this different model could, could change that opinion, I don't know.
What about the district principal with the instructional leader at full time?
That's the, you don't.
So we're changing the titles?
The accountability piece.
But getting the, the number of days back up?
That's a board decision, I, I, I wouldn't pull you off that, but I, I'm just saying that really is your decision.
I, I kind of feel like, you know, if Elaine thinks it's, it's possible without guarantees, if the teachers seem to give their endorsement, at least in, in broad strokes, to that notion, I suspect it probably is, is doable. And I think, you know, coming at it from a perspective of opening up the process a little bit, having the teachers weigh in and take ownership in some way of how this comes out, and having, you know, a more senior leader who can sort of take ownership and really kind of put their stamp on things. You know, if we end up with the savings and we end up at a point where we feel like that money would be well-spent to address some sort of deficiency, if we do it and we figure out that too much time went into the principals dealing with behavior issues, you know, could we add a point five FTE?
Right.
Or a full FTE on behavior and, and sort of isolate, you know, where we need to kind of fine-tune it. But I, I think it's worth pursuing.
And then how do you revisit it, let's say in a year, if it's not working? We have people that have a certain contract, is it a one-year contract, two-year contract, staggering?
Always in the first year, a one-year contract.
So, but yeah, we will have to have sort of a dipstick test by October. Do we think that this model's going to work with, with this reduced number of days?
Right.
It's a lot easier to start low and find out you need, needed to add days than it is to tell somebody.
Right, I, I agree. And I like where you were going with this, Eric, because that was something that came up at the last meeting on Thursday, the behavior piece. And I know that that was something that was presented to the board during the budget meetings this year. So we should pay attention to that.
Yeah, and I think that have the administration come in with a fresh eye and with some ultimate accountability to one person and say, you know, this is exactly what we need. And I think when we went through the budget process, there might have been a sense on the board that there wasn't a clear articulation of what all our resources were and how they're being deployed towards the behavior thing. I think there was some sense that there, it just wasn't well.
Right.
Very coherent, you know, so I think this is a chance for somebody to come in and maybe right the ship a little bit in that sense. Or tell us, you know, what they need, if they need another half a person, whoever it is.
Laura, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I have a quick question.
Can you just say your last, your name?
Laura, I've heard Susan had been talking about the second option, which is not to cut the days, still two people, call them whatever you want, but they still have full days. And you said that even if we, if that was the model, that that would still also have a savings because of the current, the current.
It's.
Guys are earning, okay, so either way, either way, there's, there should be more of the savings when you go forward.
Unless we manage to hire the two most senior principals in the state of Vermont, we should be able to have a saving.
So there would be a savings there anyway, so that even without cutting.
That said, what is tricky is the benefit elections.
Right.
And we don't have any control over that. And that could, that's a pretty big swing in terms of money.
All right, anything else? All right, moving on to five point.
I will go get.
Oh, yeah, we need the principals for the principals report.
I'll look at the principals, and I don't think you need me again till it's, you don't need me. I can use him now, if you do, she'll, she'll text me.
Okay. So five point one, I guess we could skip ahead to five point two, the CSSU debrief. Susan, Eric, what do we talk about at CSSU? Yeah, we had, there was a great presentation about early childhood education, was a common topic. I'm assuming it'll be posted, plus it'll be on RETN, it was really informative.
There's the insurance, but.
And we had, yeah, we had a presentation overview by Mike Boardman for insurance and sort of overall risk management.
And Sback, Molly said that to expect a significant drop in scores initially in Sback, I thought that was interesting.
Thank you, Cindy.
And then the paras are going to be moved to the SU.
Yeah, the supervisor union board elected to have pair educators who are a part of special education be technically employees of the supervisor union, it was a choice, but it was the recommendation of the supervisor union. They're still, their assignments will still be made as they are now, but their checks will be from supervisor, supervisor union.
And then that Connie Engel was retiring, that was news to me.
Yes, so Connie Engel, who's been our, she's been an SLP at our school for a long time.
Twenty-something.
Twenty-something years, and she is our point five special education administrator. She's technically an employee of the supervisor union, but she serves our school, and she is retiring effective the end of the year. So we thank her for many, many years of great service to our school.
And then the other, Acts one sixty-six, where they're trying to identify the three and four-year-olds or, you know, zero to five-year-olds who might need early intervention, and then the universal preschool, three thousand dollar stipend, I guess, or whatever, reimbursement, which will be effective in twenty sixteen? So that's everybody.
Susan should do this debrief every time.
I just happen to be interested in the early education piece.
So I guess, yeah, the message being, if any of you know young children who might be eligible for this but not already receiving services or not in a preschool, you should watch that presentation. Help them figure out their options. All right, five point one, principals report. And I want you all to know that they had a whooping cough outbreak in Heinsburg, and they said perhaps we should say at the bottom of their letter to parents, at least we don't have TB.
How adorable.
Yes, so we have.
So, I guess, you know, the, the big piece here is around the tuberculosis update. And the, you know, the piece I would add to this is since the, since the time that this report was written, those last tests were read, that was still pending at the writing of this report, and one additional student and one additional adult was identified as having a positive skin test. So the themes that, you know, we have experienced through this is that, you know, it's been a really great collaboration with the Department of Health. They've been really excellent communicators. They have, you know, we've obviously taken the lead with all of this. And they have commented about how much they appreciate the way the staff, the way the students have, you know, really been wonderful. They couldn't say, they, you know, every day they were in the building, they had comments for Audrey and I saying, we can't believe how amazing your staff is and how great your kids are. And in particular, we had a handful of support staff that basically worked the clinic on those days, just to be there for kids, obviously. So, and the, the staff has been amazingly supportive of, you know, just the disruption that it has on the building, and completely flexible. The main priority has been and will continue to be to maintain a safe and comfortable learning environment for everybody. So as we mentioned in the report, I think we mentioned in the report, the plan is to, we've already reached out to the Department of Health to do a debrief with them, and when we did that, they said, oh, well, that's actually part of our protocol anyway, because they use an incident command model. And so we're in the process of scheduling that debrief, and essentially we're going to share feedback that we have, feedback we've heard from staffs, and feedback we've heard from parents, get their feedback of what about, you know, how things went these first, this first overall round, what we'd do differently if anything next time. And then we're working on getting a date set for the next round of clinics, which are supposed to happen approximately nine weeks from the first series. And only the children who, only the. And only the children who, only the students and adults who had negative tests will be tested the second round.
Will everybody be tested on the same day? Because won't it sort of, was it ten to twelve weeks from the initial test? So would they just do everybody at once?
Yeah, they're giving us a nine week. Is there, there, um, we're looking at the end of March, basically. And, um, they're gonna probably do everybody in two days. So testing day one, testing day two, reading day one, reading day two with stragglers on Friday, something like that. Um, so it will be, we weren't able to avoid Sback, so it'll be while Sback testing is going on for at least one team. No matter what, once we get into March, middle of March, we're Sback through April. Um, but, uh, we've got a lot more lead time this time to manage the logistics and communication and those pieces. So.
Well, thank you for organizing that so well.
So at this point, is there any category of person in the building who has not been tested?
No, everybody who wanted to be, unless they opted not to be tested.
Or declined.
But anybody who works in the building had the option of being tested. No one was required to be tested.
Including bus drivers.
Let me re, let me correct that. Um, when the, the Department of Health did their in, initial investigation, they did their contact analysis for the people who, who they considered exposed to the employee. So that involved about a hundred and forty people, about a hundred and thirty children and about ten adults. Those people were asked to come and be tested. Then, uh, based on the results of the, the positives that were found and that those positives weren't necessarily localized into one classroom. They were, the positives were spread evenly, the Department of Health decided, let's test all the children. They were not going to open the testing up to all adults because they didn't clinically think that there was a risk or exposure to any more adults than they've already tested. However, the adults kind of expressed angst about that. And, um, that was communicated to the Department of Health and the Department of Health just decided to open it up to anybody who would want it, who wanted to be tested. So I don't know the actual, um, percentage of adults who, who took the test and who didn't. Most did. Um, but that's, but it was open to anybody who was, worked in the building.
But there's nothing mandatory about the testing.
Correct.
What about cafeteria workers?
They were.
They were tested too. They were offered the testing too.
You're welcome.
So who's teaching Spanish?
A, a substitute. So we were able to find a substitute that's not necessarily, um, a Spanish expert, but she was able to commit on a continuous basis. And, um, our world language staff has been supportive in helping prepare lesson plans. So piecing it together. Luckily, we've had some consistency in that person. And there are the farm-to-school pieces, and we definitely want to highlight those. Lot to celebrate there. Any questions about that?
Is it true that they're going to be giving tours at town meeting day?
They're actually gonna be, yeah, they're gonna be giving tours and speaking, yeah, the students that were mentioned.
That's great.
And as course, we wanted to say thank you and congratulations to Connie Engel on the announcement.
Five point three, second quarter financial management report. Any questions from the board?
Right, I mean, it's, nothing much changed from the last quarter.
Nope.
So it's nice that, um, our suspicion cafeteria is out. That's great.
Yeah, I think they're looking good.
All right, uh, moving on, five point four, facilities update. And first off, thank you Lee Dorr for coming to the meeting. Lee is an architect at R T N. And he's here to help Mark, so.
Well, this isn't so much an update as, uh, we promised. I, I don't know how to turn that. But, uh, we said we'd have, uh, there seemed to be some questions about, uh, the bond issues that are going forward that deal with the, again, that deal with the roof, lighting in the nineteen sixty-nine wing. I said roof, many roofs on the building, lighting in the nineteen sixty-nine wing, uh, the elevator. Um, and, uh, there seem to have been some questions at the budget, uh, session. And, uh, we said we would bring in Lee to help answer some questions, especially, uh, Lee has specifically on the elevator. Um, but, uh, so I guess I would open it up if anybody had anything that they wanted to ask about the bond in particular. Or having to deal with the facilities in general.
Go ahead, Bud.
Well, I got my, my questions answered when I went to the facilities committee meeting. I think whatever benefit there might be to this is having Lee available on RETN for the masses of pieces, people who are not here.
So, I mean, I, we can go over sort of briefly what the bond entails. And we've talked about this at a number of meetings, so anybody who actually watches us on RETN, I encourage you also to go back a couple of meetings. Um, the first piece is, uh, dealing with some roofs at the school. Over the gym, over the art atrium, uh, in the nineteen ninety-six part of the building. Um, there is some leaking in places, especially, uh, in the fifth grade classrooms. Uh, we've had leaks, uh, in the gym roof that have been repaired. Um, showed them off last year during a tour of the building. Um, there is some lighting issues in the older part of the building, the nineteen sixty-nine, uh, building. We have been replacing fixtures, um, slowly, but, uh, there is, um, they, they're just past their lifespan and they're at a point where now it's not just a lighting issue. It's making sure that, um, they work and they work correctly all the time. Um, and finally, the elevator, um, and this is sort of the larger piece of the bond, uh, is a fixture in the building. It's been there since the nineteen ninety-six renovation. Um, it is, uh, what's called a, and Lee, I'm gonna screw this up, the Lulu, Lula? Lula?
Limited use, limited access.
Limited use, limited access, uh, function. Uh, and so it's not, it's not an elevator you'd find in the World Trade Center. It is a hydraulic lift that.
You don't find any elevators in the World Trade Center.
Freedom Tower, I'm sorry. You're right. You're right. Uh, in the Freedom Tower. It is, uh, become an issue. It, it is something that by code, we have to have in the building. Um, and it is at a point where, um, people have told us that, uh, they can't find parts to fix it. It has broken down on occasion. Uh, it is not, uh, functional, um, all the time. It is currently functional. It currently works. Uh, but it is something that if it breaks down, we're gonna need to fix immediately. It's at a point, uh, where we need to take care of it so it doesn't become an emergency situation. Uh, where we've tagged that price tag at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fix that. And that is to replace the car, um, the elevator car. Uh, we don't have to dig out a new shaft. We don't have to do, uh, too many adjustments. We'll have to do a little floor, um, to make the floors level and meet each other. So there'll be a little other construction, but, um, that's where we are on that. Uh, it's, the, these are, these are, we've done big, uh, research at the school on what needs to be done uh, as far as renovations or what we think needs to be done as far as renovations and repairs. And these have been pulled out of a, a report as things that will be flagged as urgent needs at the school. And I, they go to weather tightness and safety and, and code violations. So, um, I'd open it up for further questions.
So, Lee, do you know what the typical lifespan is or what the lifespan of the elevator we're considering replacing? This current one maybe get us to twenty years, possibly.
I think it's an important distinction that a Lula and elevator really aren't the same thing. And part of that has to go with code requirements and part of it is just longevity of the system. Um, it's kind of, you know, elevator light, if you will. And in order to keep a Lula operational, we're gonna have to seek a variance. Um, and this approach was deemed kind of the cost-effective approach for the school because if we change anything from the existing Lula and say we wanted to put in an elevator, um, the way the current configuration of the school is, there's, it's pretty difficult to find the right spot to add on an elevator, create a new larger shaft, um, the new elevator code, which was adopted over a year ago. They're very large elevators. You gotta be able to get, you know, a stretcher into them and be able to turn it around. So they're much larger than what the, the earlier code was. Um, and finding a spot in the building to actually hit all of the floors is difficult 'cause there's a lot of different levels, you know, with the nineteen thirty-nine building where it all comes together then. So having to keep the existing Lula there is, is probably the most cost-effective approach for you. Um, there aren't a lot of vendors that, you know, install that. Uh, we have a, we've reached out to a couple of vendors to get some basic pricing information to come up with this budget number. And, you know, the warranty on one of them is for, you know, three years on parts and a year on labor. With an additional maintenance contract, they'll add that to three years and three years. The longevity of the system should be, you know, another ten to fifteen years, I would say, before some more maintenance would have to be done on it.
Thank you. Any other board questions?
Just one point on the Lula, that there's a second quote that's, um, that, that was being considered that, and that would not require changes to the floor in the hallway, um, to reconcile heights. So that's another, which meet, which would mean the project would be less expensive and less involved. So that quote's being considered as well.
Thank you.
Lee, here's the part that I think would be of more interest to people than the immediate bond. Um, for the repairs you've, and Mark have described. The part about what comes next. You fellows, meaning you and you, might discuss this in front of the camera so the people can understand, uh, what else is being considered. Brad, are you here reporting for the paper? Good. So, you know, I heard a range of things when I was at that meeting. The costs of which are gonna be substantially more, well, depending on what you do, than what we're facing immediately as what I think we all consider to be necessary repairs. So, what else?
What else? The, the what else is, is an important piece 'cause it's certainly what else is at the board's discretion about what to move forward with. You know, personally, I've been involved with, you know, looking at the school, you know, since before we did the last addition. And so at that point, you know, there was a pretty comprehensive study completed that dealt with looking at the entire building, both from an infrastructure standpoint and from an educational standpoint of, you know, what are the best practices to be able to have a facility be available for twenty-first century learning moving forward. So there are two pieces of this. There's infrastructure needs and there's educational needs, and that's what we looked at. Those, those options ranged, you know, at one point before we did the replacement of the nineteen forty-nine building, there was a project option out there that was, you know, ten, fifteen million dollars, everything, soup to nuts comprehensive. That was deemed, you know, not cost-effective for the community. And so the facilities committee at that time started looking at kind of focused interventions. The first being the nineteen forty-nine building replacement. At that point, when that project was undertaken, it was known that the older section of the building, the nineteen thirty-nine building that houses the library and the cafeteria, uh, were in significant need of repair. And those costs, you know, ranged up to, I think, three million dollars, taking care of infrastructure and some educational needs, dealing with the computer lab and access to different floors. So there's a significant amount of money that's involved just to, you know, bring that building up to current standards. The facilities committee looked at several options. One is renovating that in place. They looked at, you know, taking it down and replacing it in kind with new construction. They looked at taking that wing down and replacing it with additions in other parts of the building. They've looked, uh, at taking that down and trying to replace it within the existing footprint of the building with very minimal additions. And so that work is ongoing. Excuse me, nothing has been finalized yet. There's a range of options out there. They all have significant price tags, some more than others, depending on, you know, which option is presented. But I think the takeaway is that the bond that's coming up, you know, at town meeting is just, you know, some initial triage work on a very long deferred maintenance list. And there is more to come for the community to start thinking about. And I think the facilities committee's been working diligently, trying to figure out what is the best approach moving forward. And I think, you know, looking in the crystal ball at enrollment numbers. You know, a, a year ago, we looked at enrollment, at enrollment numbers, it looked like there was a little bit of a decline. I think more recently, we've seen a more steady state in enrollment numbers. And a lot of that has to do with, you know, what are the space needs, uh, for the community and for the school moving forward. So there's a lot of different things that need to get looked at. It's still in process right now. Um, and I think at, at some point, there's gonna be a discussion of options that are available to the community that need to get shared, uh, and discussion with the relative costs of each of those. But there is still a lot of work from a facility standpoint that needs to be done at the school.
When you say taking it down, does that mean also, is there another option of just shutting it off, like closing it off?
There is. We, we talked about that too, and that just basically is moving it, the problem from, you know, a school problem to a town problem. You know, and, you know, it all becomes a taxpayer issue. Um, there would be certain issues for the school, leaving that there, 'cause you certainly have to keep it, you know, heat operational, so nothing freezes. Um, it is an option to be able to basically mothball that and keep it in a steady state. There's been options discussed, you know, if you repurpose it for other town uses, you know, what could that look like? Um, there's lots of questions that need to be answered there, but it's certainly an option.
Yeah, 'cause Heinsberg did that. And then they opened it again when they needed it. Um, so was that, is, would we, would we have a similar opportunity? You have to just certainly not use it, but heat it, obviously, so that pipes don't freeze. But, um, just kind of ignore it until we might need it or come up with an idea?
You, you could do that. We, we have to figure out how to replace the space, you know, because there, those are the main core functions of the school, the kitchen and cafeteria and library. So, you know, the options being considered are trying to replace that with, you know, available space within, you know, classrooms that aren't being utilized anymore. Um, we've looked at options where we actually replace some of that with smaller, more efficient space to serve those areas for the kitchen and cafeteria. We've looked at options that, you know, take the multipurpose room and, you know, turn that into, you know, cafeteria space as well. You know, so it can be, you know, the cafeteria piece can be moved out, you know, in the evening, so it can be still used for community use. So there's a range of options on the table. But in order to just kind of follow your plan, we have to figure out what to do with that space, 'cause it's certainly needed to deliver the program.
And just the elevator, I've never really, I've seen the door, but I don't know where it goes. Does it go down to the cafeteria? Does there access?
It does.
Those steps.
Serve all the floors right now.
No.
It doesn't go down at all over the cafeteria?
No, 'cause it's a half.
Oh, it's a half, like?
Yeah, it just goes from.
Right.
Primary way to the second one. There's another lift that goes from the library to the cafeteria. So you'd go up the ramp to get to the library. If you needed to get to the cafeteria, you could take that lift down.
That's really like a lift, like a platform lift to right.
Yeah.
So, could you put a person in there? Like that's how you, you could meet people?
Yeah.
If you need to, okay.
You could put a person in a wheelchair. You could put a person with a cart.
Okay.
Um, we just replaced that. The, um, do you remember? Uh, I think it was September when it was done.
It used to make the grandparents go all the way around.
I remember my mom and her walker going all the way around the front.
The front of the school to the cafeteria? So. Any other questions for Lee? Thanks so much for coming by.
No problem.
All right, six point, oh, six point one, budget informational meeting preparation. So, um, we have the, um, or I have, I should have shared already, we do the, um, template of, uh, the PowerPoint presentation that Bob and Tammy work on so that we'll have a presentation for the meeting. They've shared it with Greg and Audrey as well. I have to say I love them. But I'll, I'll share it with everybody if people want to tinker with it or ask in for the lead thing. That's fine. You know, Bob's actually out of town until.
Monday.
Until Monday. But if, if, you know, it would be great if people wanted to weigh in. Otherwise, we just sort of rehash last year's and substitute the numbers and monkey it around and for some input from Greg and Audrey. Anything, I don't know if people want to discuss anymore? And so I guess sort of on that same thing, we have, we traditionally done, well, the last few years, we've done the full page presentation in the Charlotte News. And we used to do an, like an insert flyer, but it was more expensive. And Monica sent me the, our version from last year. And I think again, I should, I should have sent out to the whole board. I don't, I don't think I did it. But I did send it to Greg and Audrey because we'll need some input on, you know, things that have happened in the school and some updated pictures. But I really welcome, if anyone wants to take over doing it and wants to reformat it or do it any other way, I'd be happy to let you go and run with it. But I'll try to, when I get home tonight, I'll try to at least send that, the, the version from last year to everybody. And then Susan was talking to someone tonight about, from Williston, they have a, a separate handout that they have available, a two sided sheet. So we could think about doing that too, to have it available at the library or a school that just sort of talks about the numbers.
Exhibit A over here. It just looks kind of nice to have sort of bullet points in people's fingertips because I don't think people are gonna walk around with a Charlotte. Well, they might be walking around with a Charlotte, you just tucked under their arm. But just to like have parents be able to grab it, I mean, it's not, but last year. But it's like something that I think might be helpful to, to think about. Or put it in a newsletter or PTO newsletter.
So we, we have limited time, of course, because voting on the budget in.
Two weeks.
So if anyone wants to take that lead, that would be great. And other, maybe we can start one and share and work from there. All right, six point two communications boards corner, next article submission.
So I'm gonna, I'm writing something on the bond issue. I haven't done yet. Probably tomorrow or Thursday. You know, send it around before I send it in. It's due Friday or Saturday.
Okay, great.
For future reference pursuant to Lee's comments this evening, this. In future board corners, I think you should probably have a corner of that corner talking about what's going on at the facilities committee. Because it, it feels very much as though we're on track to, at some point in time, plop down another bond in front of the people. In the event that that happens, it would be better to have them informed on the long run rather than the short run. And we all know that there's some difficulty with attendance at special meetings. People tend, the special meeting they tend to show up for is the booth. So if you could provide some continuity as that goes along so that people can begin to form some opinions and some intelligent questions about the various options that are discussed.
I can do that.
Thank you. Six point three administrative, oh no, we already did that, sorry. All right, we're moving on. Seven point oh action matters, seven point one. Do I have a motion to reaffirm our retreat date Monday, June first, two thousand and eighteen? Do I have a second? Is there any need for discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Seven point two, do I have a motion to affirm the eighth grade overnight field trip to Montreal, Quebec, June fourth to June fifth? Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Just out of curiosity, what are they going to do there?
I have their itinerary. It's a combination of some fun activities as well as co-fulminated. They're visiting the Biodyne, the Museum of Science in Montreal, the old Montreal orientation exploration to look at the architecture. And then they're gonna have some fun activities that evening going to Laser Quest Montreal. And then they're going to an amusement park the next morning.
So they have to do a lot of fundraising, I would imagine, in terms of?
Um, actually, no, they only did the variety show and the fundraising from the soccer jamboree.
And that would be enough to come back, huh?
Well, yeah, well, come see.
It's one night.
It's, yeah, it's only, it's just one night, but parents will still have to pay a portion of it. But the fundraising will help a little offset the cost of it.
It's kind of like the third grade trip again, in a way. Because they went to, did they go to the Biodyne when they were in third grade, that group?
Some kids did if they were with a certain group, but, right. They voted they wanted to do something different than we've had in previous years, so.
I think it's good. Not quite going back to Quebec City, but it's.
Right. Well, that was a two day.
Big city, yeah, big city and a cool experience. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Seven point three, do I have a motion?
Is this the posting that Elaine was referencing or is that something you can use?
Oh, yeah, I was curious about the process as far as our input or our role as school board in the hiring process.
So what Elaine, it's probably a multi-step thing. First, we're looking for you to approve whatever it is you want us to hire. The next would be to have you approve a committee of some sort, including appointing at least, you know, not at least, two board members. And then what she usually recommends is a broad spectrum of staff representation, at least one parent as well as the board to represent the community. And it's usually a committee of ten to twelve, fifteen people, depending on the number of volunteers she gets to, to fill all the contingencies.
So you need two separate committees?
No, one committee, she's envisioning one committee to do both positions. And then depending on how, what we get for applications, for whatever it is you posted, will help determine whether the first round identifies two candidates or whether we have to re-post once we've got one candidate.
And so how long from when it's posted? You know, how long do candidates, like how long is the job open before we?
They're always open until filled, but we're, what she's got included here right now for a date, and she might revise that, would be preference for applications received by March fourth. What, that will really be based more on when is the first date she has the committee meet? And it's usually the application to do the day before. So if the committee's not meeting until March twelfth or that next week, she would have the, the period go a little longer. But it will remain posted even while interviews and everything are going, so other people could apply.
So is schools grade a national?
Yes.
So the district principal can sort of choose what they would like to be their area of expertise as far as the grade level?
I think Elaine's leaning towards she would help pick that based on their background, whether it's subject area or grade levels, whatever that ends up being, which will help guide whoever they pick to, to do the instructional leadership role.
And who will screen resumes?
Usually it's me, myself, Elaine, and if there's a facilitator. And all we screen for at the first level is are they licensed or able to get a license? And do they have whatever number of years of experience we're looking for right now? We usually have three to five that we're looking for as a minimum. Because we got to see, especially for a district role. Don't usually want somebody who has administrator, but we don't rule anybody out necessarily. Those then go to the committee and then they screen as a group based on whatever criteria they've identified.
Cindy, in terms of being eligible for a license in Vermont, if somebody's coming from another state and they have a license in that state, does that make them eligible?
It generally will, yes. There's, they call it reciprocity, it's not that simple. But, yeah, generally if you've been licensed as an administrator in one state, you'll be able to get licensed in, in Vermont. You have to at least have had a master, Vermont requires a master's degree. So if another state doesn't, that would be a hurdle.
Thanks.
Are there other questions? Do I have a motion to approve administrative structure as set forth in this sheet with a district principal and, and a second administrator who is an instructional leader slash principal?
So.
Do I have a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Eight point oh consent agenda, is there need to pull anything?
Elaine, do you want to appoint two people to be on the committee?
Oh.
Or you can wait, but just wondering.
All right, so who wants to be on the, on the principal? All right, well.
Yeah, that's great.
All right, Susan and Eric? Thank you. Eight point oh, is there a need to pull anything out of the consent agenda? All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? A second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Nine point oh, director's comments.
I wanted to have a future item agenda of looping. I wanted to just kind of get the, sort of the history and it seems like, you know, in the past four years, there's two loops were not sort of completed by the same teacher. So I'm wondering if there's a way to look at looping and kind of gain more flexibility, depending on numbers and faculty, maybe this model. Like, we would just kind of like to review it.
Yeah, okay, sure.
Just to kind of educate myself.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a takeaway for the board in how the, how this has played out with Greg and Audrey leaving in the same year. The first thing you have to understand is that Scott Cameron is Elaine's attorney. He's not our attorney. So it's conceivable that an attorney for someone who has a particular agenda could give you a different legal interpretation on a subject around which there is question. It isn't a big deal because it's not gonna change anything in the case at hand. But where it should have relevance is in our next hiring and what sort of contract the Charlotte Central School signs an administrator to. And what the penalties slash incentives to fulfill a contract might be. There are varying levels of severity in terms of implications, educational implications. And with the interests of Charlotte Central School as their primary interest, those are things we should keep in mind. So when we get around to having a contract, if there's going to be any point in having a contract other than this is how much we'll pay a person and these are how many days we expect them to work, if there's any point to the contract beyond that, we might have a conversation about that at some point, about how we want such a contract to read.
Eric? Mark?
I'm good.
So I guess I'll just say congratulations, Greg.
Thank you.
Stand to say, well, it was a good, great opportunity for you. And although, I don't think, do we say anything about Connie here? I think maybe Connie did, but also, you know, our best was just to Connie Engel who was, did I repeat this? Yeah, all right. Thanks, Connie. So everyone remember to come to our next, or our, the school force town meeting, which is Monday the second at seven PM. And remember to vote the following day.
Well, Kristen, do you know what the deadline is for absentee ballots?
I do not. But you could call Mary Mead tomorrow morning. She can have that at her fingertips. So ten point oh, our next regular meeting is March seventeenth here. And actually, we have to decide if we want to start at five or five thirty. I don't know how robust our agenda is.
We do it based on the agenda planning meeting.
So after the agenda planning meeting, it'll either be a five o'clock start or five thirty. We go before CSSU that night because we have to reorganize as a board. Presumably, it'll be all the same people unless there's some, right, I mean, I'm not aware of. And then the CSSU meeting will follow at seven. There's a board chairs meeting, March third at eight. And our April board meeting is not the typical schedule because it would fall during school break. So instead, it'll be April fourteenth.
And we moved the board retreat because there was a reading specialist coming on the Friday. Yeah, so is that open to the public, that in-service day? Or is it, is she gonna be, is Lucy gonna be doing anything for the larger community or is it just for faculty?
I don't know, I think it might be sold out by now too because she's so popular and.
So it's at, where is it at?
It's at, um.
The stuff like, I think, isn't it?
No, it's, it's in Burlington. It's one of the hotels, the Marriott, I mean, one of the hotels. But I think it's sold out already because she's so popular. I think you can register for a ticket.
All right, anything else?
Kristen, you're planning that we'll have our entire meeting before the CSSU meeting on the seventeenth?
Yeah, so that's why I guess, depending on what's on the agenda, it'll either start at five or five thirty. And I guess if we don't conclude, we would have to, we'd have to come back.
There's no common topic at the SU board meeting in March? So the SU board meeting should only be about an hour long, if that.
You know, I asked Elaine some time ago for a common topic meeting on the subject of Act seventy seven. And she said that that had been attended to, but I haven't heard any more about it.
A session to discuss superintendent evaluation?
Is that personalized learning plans?
Yes.
That's, I know it's on the agenda for this year, I don't remember which month, if it's May or March.
It's April, it's April. I know, because I'm prepared for it.
So as Eric was reminding me, we were supposed to add an executive session to discuss superintendent evaluation.
Tonight?
Tonight. Because the superintendent evaluation is Thursday. So I guess we won't adjourn now if I could have a motion to go on executive session.
So what, um, for Adam's unscheduled executive sessions. For the record, I'm gonna have a couple of questions that I think are confidential relating to this curriculum system. That can't be answered, I don't think, in open meeting, so.
So do you need?
No, but it needs to be on the record that that, no, I don't need.
Okay. All right. Thank you all for coming.